Old business. I have one thing on old business. A few months ago, Mark, you made the statement that we had an extra $100,000 in our budget, in our surplus. We gave the DPW some of it for the purchase of some stuff that they needed pretty bad. A couple of weeks, or a week or so ago, I contacted you and wanted to just inquire about the piece of equipment that we had down there because they had contacted me about it. And that just struck me odd that we were gonna put a $3,000 door on a piece of equipment that may only be worth $3,000. And I would like to make a motion that we take the remainder of that money and put it into a new Bobcat Skidsteer that would go to the DPW. I asked Ron to do some price checking for me. And I think it's a very important piece of equipment. I know it's not slated to be replaced until a few years. And I know there's other equipment that needs to be replaced, but sometimes you just have to make a decision not to spend money, you know, keeping things, something running. I think we've done our best to keep what machinery that we do have running for more time, more years than any other governmental agency has. So I would just like you guys' input if you think that we should put money into something that's basically, I'm thinking, 26 years old, roughly. I looked on the Internet and the piece of equipment is probably only worth about $2,900. I mean, the average is that's what it sells for. The motor could go out of it tomorrow. And I just think it's, I think it's one of the most, most used pieces of equipment in the wintertime that we have. It runs mostly all day long. And I just, in my eyes, I think that we should replace it.
Yeah, the Skidsteer, I saw that on my tour. And it had a broken door at that time, and as far as I know, it's still broken. And the guys push snow with it. They do a lot of, push the sidewalks, snow. And a lot of times, if you're ever out in the elements and you push a bank of snow, that stuff flies back in you and it can almost fill up the cab, which can be very uncomfortable. So I did ask if that could be looked at. And I didn't know if we were going to do a lot newer, used, or how we're gonna approach that. But the result after that, I didn't appreciate. But I really think that the employees need a good, honorable, somewhat warm piece of equipment to work out in this weather. And we're gonna have some weather here. And we're feeling it a bit today. I had trouble getting warm once I walked into this building. So I'm very concerned about our employees being exposed to the elements in that old Skidsteer.
Have we done, have we secured pricing on it from different places?
I would like to let Ron, let us know what you came up with.
At Mayor Altough's request, we obtained MyDeal pricing, which is competitive bid pricing, for the model to replace that, the existing Skidsteer. MyDeal pricing for the unit itself is $42,075.36. We also...
What is it? I'm sorry, Ron, what is it? Forty-two thousand?
Forty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty-six cents. We also, as you may know further in the agenda, we, our large seven horsepower Simplicity snow blower burned itself up. And we requested MyDeal pricing for a snow blower that would fit on the front of the Bobcat and got MyDeal pricing of $4,073.60 for a compatible snow blower that would fit on the front of a new Bobcat.
Now, that, that snow blower that burned out, that's the one that they get around the parks and stuff with?
Yes, and around City Hall and some of those side walk.
And that, that snow blower will be able to fit down, you know, do the parks and, I mean, there's spots on Main Street I know that we can't, we can't do because light poles are too close to buildings and stuff. But do you think that, so you think that that is, what do you think of that piece of equipment? The state removed it, or not the state, but the county removed a tree that fell down in my front yard over the holidays. And that's what, they had the Bobcat. And they, they said we've had very many, you know, many of them because they do wear out, so.
Yeah, since talking with staff, they feel that they would be able to do the majority of it with this piece of equipment that we're currently doing, either with the existing Bobcat or with the larger Simplicity that we have.
I hesitate to even comment on the Skidsteer. I was just concerned that our employees were out in the open because what I did when I asked the mayor to ask the question, it becomes micromanaging and that's not what the council is supposed to do. But it wasn't getting done. I've seen that, I've seen that thing on my tour and it still isn't fixed. So I just wanted to address having a comfortable, dependable Skidsteer for our employees.
So would that, any more discussion?
Well, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
When this issue came up about a week and a half ago, I met with staff who use the Skidsteer as well as the mechanic who works on it and the DPW director. And first of all, I asked about the comfort issue and then we were back. The door was damaged and sprung, and so a new door needed to be ordered. I found out a week and a half ago through a council member that it was still on back order and that it hadn't been replaced yet. And so I met with the staff to find out what the status of the back order was. A phone call was made immediately on the spot to find out what the status of the back order was. The supplier did not know for sure when we were going to receive the door. And so I was told that, and they said that they would get back to us. And so I was told that I would be informed as soon as we knew what the status of the back order was. And a week and a half later, I've not been informed of anything regarding the status of the back order in the door. I don't know how much diligence has been put into trying to find a door or even to perhaps manufacture something if we needed to take care of employee comfort because that certainly is a priority. But the employee himself, who uses the piece of equipment, said that it was fine until we could get the door in. In the meantime, you had mentioned that there, we ended the last fiscal year with, in the general fund, with $100,000 of revenue or expenditures. At the time, I recommended that we use 15% of that, or $15,000, for new equipment and went to the DPW and said, "Ron, go back to the folks and talk about the priorities here." And I don't know what the timing was. I don't know if the door was sprung before that or after that. I don't know. But wasn't replacing the Skidsteer wasn't a priority at the time. But then the other 80, 85%, the other $85,000, my recommendation was gonna be that we use that for streets and that we use that for Jefferson Street. Now, certainly, if you think that equipment is a higher priority than streets, then you could allocate that surplus money to equipment. That's your decision. Then moving forward, we, after I had the, had a discussion with staff about a week and a half ago, as I followed up with Councilmember Tealander on it, I had said that I really thought, and I wrote in my manager's report, that it would be a good idea for, previously, it's been mechanics and the DPW director that have developed priorities for equipment replacement. And we have an equipment replacement plan based on those recommended priorities that the council has adopted. During the course of this discussion, it became pretty clear to me that the priorities of equipment replacement are more based on the actual users of the equipment. The actual users actually have some differing opinions on what should be replaced first and what should be replaced second. And so I thought it perhaps a good idea to get the equipment operators together, revisit the equipment replacement plan, and talk about those priorities, especially as we're coming up on budget season this year. And so we were moving forward with that kind of a process. And back today, I pulled up the hours of use of equipment that Dan put together, I think over the five years prior to 2015. And actually happened to look at the Skidsteer. And Skidsteer is used anywhere from, off the top of my head, it was 90 to 127 hours a year. So that's how much use the Skidsteer gives in a year. You know, one, that is, it's primarily winter months, or you know, if it's all year long, you know, Ron would have to address that. But the usage is about $100 a year. The other two priorities in the plan are plow truck. And you know, that's a pretty sizable replacement, but it is in the plan and it does take about a year to build them. And we're actually getting ready to come to you and ask for your approval to get one on order so that we can move forward with replacement of the plow truck. And then the next thing would be the loader, which is a loader that I'm told that we can't get parts for anymore. So right now, those are the next two priorities. But my hope was to go back and have a discussion with staff and talk about those priorities and make some recommendations to you. But again, if it's your desire to, you know, allocate that 85% of the surplus that we're gonna put for streets, if you want to put that core equipment instead, if that's a higher priority, then it's your way of calling.
Well, I think all those priorities have probably, it moved around a little since their snow blower physically caught on fire. So I think we're gonna stick with the priority plan on the Skidsteer. We still need to address the snow blower. That is, obviously, you don't plan for an engine fire.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we're internally, we were moving forward on the snow blower and looking at prices and options.
Okay. Well, I think we've gotten pretty lucky with the weather so far, but...
Yes, we have.
...that's not gonna hold up, I don't think.
Yeah.
So I think we need to address that at least. And you know, we can come back to the, to the Skidsteer once Ron gets his consensus priorities of what he wants to do about that. You know what I mean? I think we need to address the snow blower. Usually, things tend to work not as well once it's been on fire.
I think we are addressing the snow blower, aren't we?
Yes. We've looked at, at just the residential type snow blower is about $1,500. I would prefer that we get a commercial type snow blower, more heavy duty. The Simplicity was more of a heavy duty machine. But I would prefer that we get a commercial type snow blower. They're in the $3,000 neighborhood. Unfortunately, there's that many around. Most anybody that is shopping for a commercial snow blower has purchased quite a few of them. We're still looking to see if it's even feasible for us to get a commercial grade snow blower. We're still looking.
My whole deal with this Skidsteers deal is not to, not to change the priority of the snow blower or the loader. I'm just saying that we have this, this little bit of a surplus. We take some of that, some of that money and we buy the Skidsteer and leave the Equipment Fund. You know, they don't have to redo it, reorganize it. Just, this is above and beyond that. We're not, we're not gonna take it out of the Equipment Fund. We're gonna leave it. If you, if you go back and look, the last four or five years, we've put $50,000 a year into the Equipment Fund and then we didn't spend it. But that didn't carry over and that, I think that money should have carried over so that there was, there would have been a surplus in that Equipment Fund. And it didn't. So I think we should take this, this money and spend it, spend it on a piece of equipment so that we know that our employees are out there basically being taken care of. It's, it's not a want, it's a, it's basically a need. We're not, we're not gonna have to buy a $3,000 or $3,500 snow blower. We're not gonna have to buy a door. And we could probably sell the old, old piece of equipment for a few thousand dollars. So that one, I think that would really help out.
Because I'm confused about why we wouldn't have to buy a snow blower.
I don't think we'll have to buy a big snow blower. We won't need that because we're gonna use that other snow blower to do most, the majority of the, of the work, aren't we? Or do we still need a $3,000 snow blower?
No, if we bought the attachment, but that's a $4,000, that's, you know, the cost of the Bobcat itself. It's a $4,073 dollar cost for an attachment.
Would cover the snow blower.
Then we would not purchase a walk behind snow blower.
What are the mechanics and the width of that, the width of the snow blower and the width of the Bobcat?
Width of the Bobcat, wheelbase is 68 inches. The width of the snow blower is 60 inches.
So we would be driving on an average of four inches on each side of the sidewalk on grass, packing snow down on it?
We believe that there's some modifications that we could make to that, put a wing on the edge of the blower to help push the snow back to be able, doesn't change the wheelbase though. It doesn't change the wheelbase, so it pushes the snow back away from it.
Will that put pressure on the outside of the sidewalk to crack and break?
Not any more than what we've been using. We've been using our existing Skidsteer, which is approximately the same.
Okay.
Wheelbase.
But what sidewalks are we talking about? Are we talking about what sidewalks? On City Hall and the parking lots and those sidewalks?
Parking lots.
We're not using the Skidsteer on those lines.
No.
So we're working on using the Skidsteer, so maybe adding an extra weight on those pieces of sidewalks.
But it would also increase the hours of use to somewhat justify this. I remember the discussion you and I had, and I asked you if we had, I used to work at a company down the road and we, every piece of equipment we had had a sticker on it. It was a brass sticker with a number and it became a part of the inventory. Its age, its expected lifespan, its potential problems at a certain point in its lifespan, they were all documented and known. And that's how we determined when it was time to replace or entirely rebuild a piece of equipment. And I asked you if you had a policy on that and you told me no. I don't know why we don't have a policy on that. I've been talked to by you before about coming to you with thoughts and things like, like the Skidsteer. And right away, you tell me that I'm not following the chain of command. And I asked you, what's your policy on the chain of command? And you said, "There is no policy." So I had concerns about that. But if you're gonna, if you're, if you're not gonna keep an inventory, if you're not gonna put those little brass stickers on there, you're gonna have surprises. And I know my truck is a 1998. I think it has five years of life left on it. I'm hoping that it does because that's pretty much what you expect, a couple hundred thousand miles and 22 years of life. And I'm expecting that in five years, I'll have to replace it. You should be expecting that a Skidsteer has X amount of life. You should be expecting that a Baco has X amount of life, based on industry standards. And when I asked you if you had that policy, you said no. So then you, then you're setting yourself up for surprises.
I think we might be talking about semantics. There's, there's not a written policy in place, but there's a document that we work from that has all the equipment on it and some expected life expectancies. And we use that to build the equipment replacement plan. But you know, as far as the maintenance issues with each piece of equipment, I'm not sure exactly what those are, but I will all fairly assume what these issues are on each piece of equipment.
Yeah, a year ago, there were, maybe it was a year and a half ago, before I was on council, there was a surprise purchase of a fire truck that had, I think it was a pumper or tanker or something. But anyway, that should have been part of the inventory. That should have been discussed five, six, 10 years ahead of its usable lifespan so that you could budget and plan for that vehicle. And I, if I remember correctly, you said that this was a complete surprise. So I, I wish we had more policy on our equipment, usability of the equipment, the lifespan of the equipment. And I think that the snow blower, I don't know if that was a freak or if it's an old snow blower or what, but it just happened and now we have that little bit of an emergency. And the Bobcat, I looked at it, it's really old. And if it's repairable, I don't know. If it can only be sold for $3,000, you know, I don't know what the weight in metal is good for, but I don't know how much longer that's gonna run. And that should have been part of the budget a long time ago.
Well, there...
And sometimes, I know that we have a plan, but it's our job that sometimes we have to deviate from the plan. And I just think that this is one of the times that we have to deviate from that. And then not, not come back and say, "We have to change the whole plan into city garage." I don't think it's fair to go to a city employee and say, "If you get this, you don't get that." That isn't what, basically, we wanted you to do. We wanted you to do, do some price checking for us. And you took it upon yourself to, to, and that's all we ask, is for some price checking. And you, and you involved the city workers in that. And I don't think that they even needed to be involved in it. We, they're, they're really, really valuable employees. And I just think that we have this money. I don't see, there's no reason, I know that, I know that streets are a priority for the, for the citizens and for us to work on. But that piece of equipment, I think it's used a lot more than 80 or 90 hours or whatever you said. I think it's used a lot more than that. It might not get billed right, but I, I think we're working on that to make sure that, that things are getting billed to the right departments so that we, we have the money to replace them. But in this day and age, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be running a piece of equipment 15 or years past its life expectancy. And I just think we should do this.
You're gonna be able to say that same thing when we start talking about plow truck and about loader and about other pieces of equipment? And there are only so many resources. And then when you talk about only having so many resources, you also have streets and you have other issues that need to be addressed as well. And you know, that's not to say that the Skidsteer isn't important. It is important. But there are other things that are important as well. And I'm not sure that you have a grasp yet of what those issues are and have an ability to be able to really truly think about what the priorities might have to be. You know, simply put, out of $100,000, there's $85,000 left. My recommendation to you is that we put that money for streets. Or if you wanna put that money for equipment, then that is entirely incorrect.
Mayor, if I, I mean, I had a discussion with staff this morning with regards to priorities that city managers talking about. And I asked the question, if you had to prioritize, which pieces of equipment are the most important? And they, they agreed that the plow truck is probably the most important piece of equipment that needs to be replaced as soon as it's a, the one that we would be replacing is a 1991 International truck. And it's, it's tied, it's, it's second, it's, it's in a backup mode now. Just a month ago, we replaced the injectors in plow truck number 13, which is 1991 International. And we're, we're in the process of trying, excuse me, 2000 International. And that will go into the backup mode once we replace truck 15, which will be coming to you with MyDeal pricing and coming with these. Also, the wheel loader is a 1983 Clark wheel loader. We can't get parts for that. Ralph Breck, our mechanic, did a great job of reinforcing the bucket on that, that wheel loader this fall. That bucket was about ready to fall apart. Now, if something major breaks on that wheel loader, it's gonna be scrap metal, just based on the age. So in discussion, in discussions with staff this morning, they said, "Major priority is replacing truck number 15, which is the plow truck." And the vendors have told us that if we ordered it today, we probably will not get that until a year from now. Second priority is the wheel loader. We use that quite a bit also. And that, like I said, it's a 1983 Clark. They don't make them anymore. We can't get parts for it. So just to help you with your deliberation in terms of this discussion.
So if we order the new plow truck and then the wheel loader after that, then we have to discount the streets like you were claiming on the Skidsteer too? Is that part of the scenario yet?
Um, at this point in time, it is. I, you know, like I said, I would like to go back and have a discussion, not only about priorities, but you know, it's been eight months or so since we really worked on the equipment replacement plan. And I'd like to go back and take a look at it. And if I know that the Skidsteer is a, is a priority for you, then we can certainly factor that in and try to figure out how to move that up the schedule. There's a, there's a truck that's in there, I think, for replacement or pickup. um, for replacement or pickup trucks. So we'll have to talk about that and maybe the skid steers, the replacement pickup truck. Um, or, you know, and like I, again, like I said earlier, you've got $85,000 on the team. And if you want to put that toward equipment rather than putting it toward streets, then, then you can do that. And that's certainly a priority.
Now, I've been railing against the poor streets in this city for too long to say that we can't discount, you know, we can't leave them the way they are. But, um, all that time that I was talking about how poor the streets are and how the, the budget that I saw from, I don't know, six, seven years ago, had a mill set aside for the city streets. And then when I saw it a couple of years later, that same budget didn't have, it had $15,000 for the city streets. And I just, uh, that's what I saw. And, you know, I'm, I'm not a numbers man like you, but I saw one mill, $100,000 sitting there in, in one year and two years later, it's $15,000. So that's when I started, uh, talking about juggling the numbers and the, you know, the shuffling of the game. Um, I don't wanna get into this discussion, but don't lay the streets on me. I just came on board.
I, it was just a-
Okay, but I'm just saying, don't lay it on me. I just came on board.
I, I think this is getting a little pretentious, but I think that we have everything in front of us that we're gonna get right now. I don't have enough information. I haven't met with Ron and I haven't met with Mark. I don't have enough information to be effective in any discussion, but I think we still need to keep it as confrontational as it's getting. I don't think we're gonna get any farther tonight. I think we should do the same thing we did with Greg a couple of weeks ago. I'd make a motion to table this discussion until the next meeting, give everybody a chance to calm down a little bit. And maybe now that we know what information we need, we can meet with Ron and Mark and whoever else and try to get a little more educated before we discuss it again. Just afraid that we're jumping back into topics that have nothing to do with what we're talking about right now.
Right.
It's counterproductive to anything that we're gonna get done. So that's where I'm at with it.
Okay. And I will respect you for that. So I guess we'll, we'll table.
Do we need a motion to-
I'll make a motion that we table it to full business for the next agenda. Give us a little bit, same thing we did with Greg's proposal. Table, let me figure a little bit out about it. Maybe now that Alan and Mark have discussed it, there's things that they can look into a little bit more for clarification. I know this is probably pretty new to me and Mr. Hodge, so now we can get a little educated on it as well. Just not even him so he's retaining any of this information. That's where I'm at with it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to table this to the, um, for more information. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? You know, um, motion carried. Okay. Okay, item. Any, any more old business? Okay, new business?
There's three items on your old business.
Okay, three others. All right, I'm sorry. Um, I see here. Okay. Um, strategic goals?
Business and records.
Pending council projects?
Uh, nothing on pending council projects.
Boarding permissions. That's a, that's a deny. New business? Um, I make a, um, new business, number A. I'd like to make a motion to retain special legal counsel to handle a matter in which the city has an interest pursuant to the Lowell City Charter, Charter. Um, pursuant, pursuant to section 77 of our city charter, the council upon its own initiative may retain special legal counsel to handle any, handle any matter in which the city has interest. In order to ensure we are properly handling our discussion of continually personnel issues, I move to retain, retain special legal counsel. I have asked attorney Catherine Henry here to note for that purpose. Specifically, I move to hire attorney Catherine Henry as special legal counsel for advising us in our discussion to continue personnel issues at a usually hourly rate of $200. One second, it, it has been brought to the floor prior to any discussion.
I'll second your motion.
I have a motion in a second on the floor. I'd like a roll call on this.
Discussion?
Or discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
If I may, um, what's this all about? I don't have any information. I don't know what I'm voting on. Uh, what's the purpose?
Personnel matter.
Do I have something? I don't have any, anything presented to me. I don't know what we're talking about. How can I go with that? I got an answer?
Okay, just, just a minute. Okay, we're talking about Mr. Howe's performance. That's what this is about, if you wanna know. Um, you have the right to know. Um, and this is awful hard for me. Um, but it's, it's, it's just, um, upon, so I think it's, I think that we need to, um, address some specific problems with it. Um, I, um, I made a phone call a couple of weeks ago to Mr. Howe to discuss something. Um, he did his very, he did the very same thing that he's always done. Flew off the handle, told me I was micromanaging. Um, and alls I did is ask what another council member asked me to ask him, and I have the right to do that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, all due respect, uh, if this is a personnel matter, uh, Mr. Howe has the, uh, choice of, uh, having this discussion in a closed session.
Okay.
If that is his choice and if that is the situation. But, uh, uh, I have nothing as far as specifics or nothing's been presented to me. I don't have anything in writing. This is something that was added to the agenda. Uh, and again, you're into tabling things, so perhaps this should be tabled to the next meeting when Mr. Phillips could be here and have a full council vote on, uh, these, these issues, as well as having information given to us so we know what we're voting on. $200 an hour.
Yeah, I've been, I've been talked to by Mr. Howe a few times about, uh, breaking rules, his rules. Um, we've been chastised in this, uh, this, this venue here for, um, non-specific things that he may not, may or may not appreciate. I, uh, there's, there's been some things going on in the past that I don't really want to dwell on anymore, but it comes down to the fact that our community is hurting. Our community had an election recently that, uh, made a point. And, uh, it's, it's, like Mayor Altough said, it's a hard thing. But, uh, we've elected, uh, well, the mayor contacted this attorney and, uh, we want to explore what our options are to get this city healing back in a, in a, where we're to the greatness where, where we've been all our, all our community's life. And, uh, so I support what he's, what he's doing. I don't know, I don't know how Chairman or councilperson DeBoer feels about it. I think you all know how I came into this position. So I, I, uh, I think we need to explore this option.
The motion on the table is to retain her? I mean, not to move forward with any, because I don't, I'm with Mr. Hodges. I don't have enough information either. And I just, I think we're already, what, four meetings into sitting here?
Yeah.
Getting to a point where now we're, we can't have a discussion without somebody taking a shot at somebody else or somebody, you know, politicking the thing off. And we're, we've been getting off topic all night long. And I know, I don't know what we can do to fix that, but it's kind of, everything's been counterproductive. It's taken, you know, putting 10 pounds of egg to a 5 pound basket. All this extra stuff that we're doing. So I don't have enough information on this either. I don't know. But I think it needs to be less personal and more about what we're trying to do here. Not, you know what I mean?
I think it is less personal, but it can't, it can't, um, we can't, we can't continue to go on. We went on for five years. We're basically doing nothing. And we can say, and that's why we're here. And, and, and to continue, I mean, we've done little bits and pieces, but we have to, we have to move on. It, it, it's not, it's not working and we have to do something about it. And this is the first, and this is the first step. And, um, it doesn't make too much difference whether Mr. Phillips is here or not. We were elected to, um, represent the citizens of Lowell. And I think it's our job, that we are due, due diligence to make sure that we're doing it, we're doing it to the best of our ability. And I don't think that we're going in the right direction. We're not gonna go in the right direction with, with the leadership that we have right now. And, um, so I'd like to have some time to review that. And that's, and that's what this is all about tonight. And, um, if you would, um, would, would agree with me on this and, um, go through with this little part, the second part of it, um, is up to you. I have a motion in a second on the floor. And, um, I'd like to take a vote now. All in favor to, um, retain special legal, roll call? Yeah, roll call vote, special legal counsel. Um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeBoer?
No.
Councilmember Hages?
No.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Altough?
Yes. It's tied, so it's not important. I would like to table, or, um, AB. I'd like to, um, table that.
Make a motion to table AB until we have a full council vote?
I'll second that.
I have a motion. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion to table, um, AB. Let's do a roll call on it, please.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Altough?
Yes. We have, um, new business, the annual authorization of signatures for city bank accounts and designation of depository banks. Mr. Howe?
Free self-explanatory is something we do over a year. Um, you, as a council, have to authorize the signatures on the checks and, uh, people who can access the safety deposit box and then our depository banks, the banks that we use to deposit city funds.
I'll make a motion that we approve the authorization.
A second?
Second.
Discussion?
For that collection, but we do retain any, any interest that we receive, which is very nominal. But any interest that we receive, well, we're holding the funds on deposit before we actually transfer the money to them. So that's, that's what CMT holds, what they do require. Two separate motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the first one for Rapid Community Council.
I'll second that.
I have a, a motion in a second for the Kent Rapid Community Council. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Altough?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, same thing for Kent Intermediate.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second for the Kent Intermediate School District, collection of summer property taxes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hages?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor Altough?
Yes. Number E.
E is a, a schedule. I've discussed with you, uh, previously. We talked about training and information. And I said that I would bring these schedules back to your draft schedule for, for your consideration. Um, it basically takes those training and those informational type, um, things that we would normally do at workshops and starts to put them into a schedule to coincide with council meetings. So we can just make, um, these presentations a part of the council meeting. Um, I, I have not, on some of the issues, like for example, I've got lighting power down for February 1 and water and wastewater systems down for February 1. I've not had a discussion with staff and with the folks that might be involved in these. So, you know, I, I need to go back with them and have a discussion about whether that works for their schedule. But I wanted at least get a draft of something before we would see if this looks like something that you wanna work from. Um, we'll continue to look at it in each meeting and maybe revise it based on input, um, and the availability of people to be able to, to meet this schedule. But here it is before you. I can be ready with a strategic planning overview on 19. And then moving down to, I have to start having discussions with the folks that are providing the-
Think like, is that something we could do in the second meeting? If you come to us with February's and say, I've talked to lighting power and wastewater. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Think that would improve them once you have the final pieces in place, that you've talked to everybody you need to, as opposed to trying to go out and talk to, you know, planning and zoning about something they're gonna be doing in May. You know what I mean?
Yeah, don't you mean, yeah. We're, we're, I think we're in a similar mind, or similar frame on that. I, I'm thinking that I review this schedule with you at every single meeting. And then just say, okay, this is who I think we have lined up for your next meeting. This is who we're looking at, you know, two or three down the road. Um, and, and just have a continual dialogue about that, about the schedule. So this becomes a sort of a full document. We're on the same page on everything. Over to that whole business. Or, um, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know, are there any formal actions you require? I guess I'm just looking for- I guess I'm just looking for consensus. First of all, you want me to give you a review on strategic planning? I mean, it's the, strategic planning is really the foundation for what you do and the foundation for how you have an impact on how this organization moves forward. And I would like to be able to give you the presentation on that and help you become familiar with the strategic plan. And at the end of the day, if you decide you don't want to operate under strategic plan, it's up to you. But I'd like to at least make that presentation to you and then allow you to make a decision.
Yeah, I'd like to have you do that.
And I'll work with the utilities on February one at your next meeting. I can let you know whether they can be geared up or not. And we'll make somebody. And the other thing is, if there's something that's not on here that you want us to put, you know, on the schedule, you know, that's, I think that's the value of reviewing it at every meeting, that you can say, "Oh, yeah, you know, let's add this to the schedule. When can we do it?" So, we can have that continual dialogue on a regular basis and keep the schedule moving forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know.
Mr. Hodges?
Oh, sure. Congratulations. That'd be the first order of business, Mr. Mayor. But, and I'm always available if you want to just chit chat and do any brainstorming.
Thank you.
If I can give you any help, let me know. And thank you very much. Very nice newsletter, a nice picture of Tricia and our new deputy city clerk. And congratulations to her. And I've had her a few times, and she seems to be doing very well, getting on board quite well. And with all that, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Alan?
I watched the light and power meeting from the last meeting that they held. At fifty-three minutes and forty-five seconds, there was a motion to adjourn. And the motion passed, and then they went into a strategic planning session. Was that recorded? I, no, it wasn't. Why, why wasn't it recorded?
No particular reason.
Okay. I'd like to discuss at some point having a policy at all. And I think we talked a little bit about meetings. And I think that the recording of all meetings, board meetings, too, wherever we can, we need to record those meetings so that people can see them.
Okay.
And please do that from here on out. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Well, as everybody knows, I got the tree cleaned up in my front yard. There's a lot of, there's a lot of ice and snow on the intersections. And a lot of it, you can't touch with a shovel. And I don't know if it would, if it would be possible, but I think that, that skid steer that we have, even though it doesn't have a door, I think we need to help the community break through them corners because I can't do it with a shovel. And I don't have a, you know, I don't live on a corner, but I know the people that do. It's, some of that ice and snow is pushed up two feet, and you can see where they tried and just give up. So, I, I think that's some of the extra stuff that we just have to do. The way the snow come, it was wet and heavy and hard on the machines. The other thing that we really need to work on is the call out for the snow. I think it was a little late. I think whoever, whoever is in charge, I think it is the police department. I know it was the first one, but it is very important and that they get called in enough so that they can get the businesses plowed out. I know Scott was on vacation. And also, it was, you know, like the perfect storm. But we do need to work on that. And we do need to make sure that the streets are clear for them, too. We have, you know, parking rules. We have the agreement with the end that they park on the same side of the street one day. And, you know, it's up to them to make sure that the guys can do, do their job as quick and efficiently. And they did do a good job. So, and that's all I have to say tonight. Managers, report.
We recently added a new file server to the computer network. And in the course of continuing, the both hard drives on the existing server began to fail. So, we replaced both hard drives. And we're also going to purchase a backup component to minimize downtime if that second file server does go down. Backup components being a control work card and a power supply. I, we talked about number two. Latest estimates on the cost of replacing a plow truck is higher than anticipated, a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And we also have a holder in the plan for this year. Our current estimates are at a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And as I said, I plan to be able to staff in the near future, review the plan so that we can recommend priorities and discuss them in more detail with you. We talked about the walk behind snow thrower. And I, just to let you know, I'm in the process of putting together the new agreements with the various boards chairs for use of the city parks over the next two years. And that's all I have.
We have no comments at this time. We do, but we're going to wait for the next meeting when Jeff's here. So...
Do we need a motion to postpone that? So, I would like to make a motion that we postpone the appointment segment of this agenda until the next meeting when Councilperson Phillips is here.
Your second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to table the appointments till the next meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carrying. And at that?
I make a motion to adjourn?
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.